Come to Perth East Council, the seventh day of August. I'd like to call our meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Our agenda, is there anything anyone wishes to add or take away? If not, we have a motion that the agenda as prepared for the August 7, 2024 meeting of council of the township of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. If you have the curinary interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have eleven items on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like pulled? Or they have any questions on them? No? Okay, so that items 5.1.1 to 5.1.11 as set out on the consent agenda for August 7, 2024, regular meeting of council be received for information. And the minutes of July 9, 2024, Perth East Public Library Board Meeting be received for information. And the minutes of July 9, 2024, regular council meeting. And July 16, 2024, special meeting of council be adopted. Moved by Bob, second by Jerry. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we're moving on. We have public presentations and we do have one public presentation tonight. And we have John Brubaker, a fresh Shakespeare resident with us. Mr. Brubaker, if you'd like to come up to the table, that'd be great. Yep, right there is good. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name's John Brubaker and reside in Shakespeare. And I thank council for looking after Shakespeare because it's a great place to live and you've managed the premises very well there, the property. I sent this request for water to Jake Collings and his, under his instructions, he advised me to present it to council because it's a council decision. If I understood that correctly. So if you just go to the map, if you have that, that's the simplest thing to look at. If you're on the seven and eight highway heading into Shakespeare, on the right would be, or would be the Shakespeare Inn and then the fire hall. Byron Street goes in between two. So just to get the location right, we go down Byron Street to the stop sign. That's the second roadside street. And that's the corner that we're, I'm addressing here. The water line is on the corner of Byron and Andrew. And the properties I'm addressing are kitty corner to that, starting with 2173, 2175, 2177, and potentially further on down the line, 2179. The current situation is 2177 is owned by Mark and his sister, Magarin. Their father, George, is developing this property with them. It's a semi, it's a property I sold to them. They have requested to have the water line brought down from kitty corner on Andrew and Byron. And it's told the cost is going to be approximately fifty-five to sixty thousand. So I'm here to let you know that I'm also interested in joining on to this water line if it's brought down, down to our locations. And so we have three units that are looking for water. You could see immediately because by next year, Mark, Mark and his sister are going to need water and they either drill or are on town water. So there's three units there. 2173 is on the corner and that property can be developed into four units. I've been a former real estate and I did research for the individual. And to my knowledge, this property could have two independent lots and then plus a lot for a semi. So four units. And so we're now looking at seven units and that property, my well is on that property. That property will probably be sold in two years or less. It could be three, but I'm speculating two. And if it goes to higher end use, there will be four units looking for water on that. So I'm suggesting there's seven units that will be, and then three immediately, four in the very near future. And there's going to be more down the line that are going to be making water decisions. Certainly 2179 probably in less than three years. So my suggestion, well, we had a look. George Magarin, he did some research and asked what it would cost to bring down the water line and it looked like it could be fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars. George's son and daughter, Mark and his, and Mark's sister would be willing to pay ten to twelve thousand dollars for that one, for their unit. And I would be willing to pay ten to twelve thousand capital to this project, leaving anywhere from thirty-one to thirty-six thousand for the township to carry until 2173 gets developed. So that's my presentation. I would like, instead of drilling wells and putting more holes into the aquifer, I would prefer to be on township water. And Mark and his sister also would like to be on the township water. So that's my presentation and request for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? No? Okay. Mike has some suggestions or some ideas that we, what we can do?
Yeah, thanks, John, for the presentation and for the information to share with council. Typically in a situation like this, there's a few options for council to consider. Obviously, one of the options would be say no. I don't think that would be what would be recommended by staff. The other would be to enter into an agreement with John 2175 and 2177 as it relates to the extension of the water main, referred to a water main extension agreement. Typically, those agreements have the proponents front the entirety of the costs. And then as the other lots are created or come on board, those costs go back to the person who made the initial contribution. The third option would be a similar arrangement, except that the township would be fronting those costs. So we would be collecting one eighth of the cost from John, two eighths of the cost from the 2177 because there's two semis going on there. And then the balance of those costs, we would have to look into options as it relates to where those dollars would be fronted from. And then the fourth option, which I don't think we can probably do because of the timelines that John referenced, would be a local improvement bylaw, which would be a broader review of extending services throughout the village of Shakespeare. So those, I believe, are the four options. I think from a staff perspective, our recommendation would be the second option. That typically we would look for the developer to front those costs. And as the others come on boards, we reimburse those costs. But certainly I wanted to present those options for council's consideration.
So just before I ask Amanda, are you looking for an answer tonight? Or are you comfortable that we make our staff come back with a recommendation and council has a discussion at our next meeting?
I would expect council to take it under consideration and review what the best options are. Might be too hasty to make a decision tonight. But just a clarification on your, the 2177 unit is looking for, not divide, not two purchases, but one purchase contribution. So when I say there's four units on 2173, the corner property, I'm looking at basically three units that would pay the balance of thirty-one thousand or thirty-six thousand. So the semi basically is paying one for both units. That's my recommendation. Because that would add up to them spending more money than would it be for them to drill a well.
Right. Yeah, I guess from our perspective, John, we look at the connections per unit. So each of those units would be freehold units. So typically there would be a connection for each of those. So I, I understand your point. But yeah, I appreciate that.
So there's a cost consideration by 217. I'm not interested in spending twenty thousand dollars to drill a well to look after myself when I can get connected. And it'll end up costing me that probably in the long run, being on town water. But I would just as soon not have to drill a well. I'd like to be on community water rather than poking more holes into the aquifer.
Okay, Amanda?
Just a question and perhaps this is probably best for a more fulsome report from staff. But for option two in that type of agreement, would there be a time limit or like how would that, like, just so I have a bit of an understanding? So obviously they've highlighted some of the timelines. But is that sort of thing captured in an agreement?
It can be, council broadening. There is, there is some flexibility. Perth East, as an example, back in 2016, entered into a similar agreement with Gaveman Homes at the time. There weren't, there weren't strict timelines around that. It was basically as those lots were severed and developed, those costs were sent back to Gaveman. I do, I think from a staff perspective, we would like timelines associated with that. It's, yeah, it's just in our nature to not have it kind of open ended that those dollars would be sitting out there in limbo. In particular, if we're fronting those costs, the township, so to speak, I think we would probably recommend to council that there would be timelines associated with that.
Okay, other questions? Andrew?
I don't know for at the point where comments or are we still asking questions of staff?
Questions. Okay, anyone else with questions? No? All right, then, if you want to comment?
Yeah, no, I appreciate him, Mr. Brubaker, coming and speaking with us tonight. I know you're instrumental in having that, and right away turned into housing, which is great. You'll know that one of the neighbors on that lost their, their well water and asked for, and staff may or may not know this, asked for town water and was said to drill a well directly across the street. So there's a bit of history in here. As far as, I wish the other proponent, or not proponents, but people at 2173, 2177, which I talked to George the other day, and 2179 were here to speak for themselves. I think there may be a bit of disconnect in what's being said and what the actuality is, including the 2173 property. Should it ever be sold, there's no guarantee that it will be four units. I'm hearing from neighbors in the area that they, they like that lot and they probably want to keep it as Mr. Brubaker did with his lot beside his house when it came up for sale to kind of have some control over it. So moving forward with a speculation, as far as development pays for development, that is, that is a key factor. It comes right from the county OP. The township holding any costs or even spending any time on private development like this is kind of, is not comfortable. Like it's, we shouldn't be paying for development. So, yeah, and the 2179 neighbor, I, I gotta come clean that the house Mr. Brubaker lives in, it was when I was a growler of road, I met my wife. I had my first smooch on the front porch of that place. It's there many, many moons ago. I know the area very well. I know the, I know the dynamics of the area very well. And I think we've, we've kind of set a standard for mid, mid-street developments and including ongoing right now, like there's other developments that don't have a semi, semi-detached. Three, three of them actually down near the feed mill, all put in wells, we're asked to put in wells. So we can do this. I think there's many problems with it. A lot of them are, I wish the people who are being included in this report or presentation were here to speak for themselves, so.
Yeah. 2173 was not interested in, in making a presentation. He's a very quiet, they're white people. And, but you're right, there's speculation on that. But as a Realtor, past Realtor, I believe that a lot that size that can have two detached homes plus a semi will not be held over for a private one. And land costs would be prohibitive for that to take place. There are other alternatives for eight hundred or a million dollars for a lot for somebody. It'll be developed into the units that I described, but it is speculative. You're correct.
Amanda?
I'd like to make a motion for a staff report on the options. I think it's helpful that we had a verbal update for Mike, but something written would be helpful for proper review, I think would be helpful.
Okay, do we have a second, Andrew? Jerry? We have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive the public presentation by John Brubaker, Shakespeare resident, requests for Shakespeare water supply line extension to select properties on Andrew Street, Shakespeare for information. And that council refer to staff for a follow-up report. That was moved by Amanda, second by Jerry. All in favor? Carried. Thank you, Mr. Brubaker.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, our next presentation is our accountant, Mr. Paul Seabock, and he's going to do the audited financial statements. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm here to present the 2023 audit financial statements. We kind of have two reports. One is our council, report to council. It kind of gives a little more detail than the formal financial audited statements that we're required to produce for the province. As you know, this is our second year of performing the audit. It's nice to come the second year. You kind of know your way around where the coffee is and everything. And everyone was, everything we asked for was provided for. A good experience, second time around too. We were here the last week of November to do an interim audit and the first week of March to do the final audit. After our audit, I pleased to report, we didn't find any unusual transactions or significant matters that we report to council's attention. Then the audit, there's no outstanding issues, disagreements over accounting policies, estimates of that nature. And as I said, we received complete cooperation from Paul of the finance department. Actually, any other department, we requested information, so we appreciate that. When we look at the statements, first thing you always look at surplus, four point two million dollars. Last year, three point nine. That sounds high. So when we're required to produce the statements under provincial accounting standards, and that's a little different than how you produce your statements for a budget purpose. The biggest difference is you expense your capital items. We amortize them and depreciate them. So when you kind of roll your statements back to how it's compared to your budget, your surplus is eighty-six thousand dollars. The largest difference is we amortized two point nine million. You spent six point two on capital, so there's a difference of three point three. So our, right away, our surplus we created is reduced by three point three when you compare it to how your budget is financing your, your debt and your assets. Speaking of assets, during the year, you spent six point two million on capital. You had budgets at six point five. As you know, the most of your money, two point six, spent on road resurfacing, five hundred thousand vehicles, four hundred thousand fire station, one point six million dollars for water and sewer projects, a million dollars recreation. The major project that wasn't done and put off to 24 was Fulton Street and some IT project, projects. You were able to do all this capital work and you only reduced your reserves by two hundred fifty-one thousand. So at the end of the year, your reserves were nineteen point one million dollars. Most of that was all budgeted. What wasn't done was carried forward. I should mention that of that fund, there's about four point eight, four point nine million dollars that is specifically allocated for water and sewer projects. Your municipality does not have a lot of debt in the year, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, down from four hundred and eighty thousand. You basically have one loan left over and you paid fifty-nine thousand dollars on principal payments. So looking at the first page that's on the board, maybe we can go to the back one, yeah? Yeah, there. So this is your, basically your balance sheet where you stood financially December 31st. The first thing you see is cash, nine point two million dollars, very close to last year. You have four major bank accounts. Of that nine point two million, there's four point eight million dollars in short term in savings account, GICs. Taxes receivable are lower, that's good. You're doing a better job collecting, you have more money to work with. Accounts receivable, by now, most of that's been recovered because that's as of December 31st. Your investments went up from ten point three million to eleven point four million. There are GICs at CRBC, Woodgundy National Bank. And most of that money is less than five years. There's a bit, two point six million more than five years. Long-term receivables, that's basically just tile, tile drain loans. You lent the money out to a farmer to work there. And inventory and prepaid. So your total assets, twenty-four point one million, that's up one point five from last year, so that's good. Things you owed at the end of the year are accounts payable. Most of that are trade payables, subdivision deposits, site plan deposits. A little bit more than last year, but there's been more going on. Deferred revenue, a lot of that is development charges, seven point two million dollars. But also six point, six hundred and eighty thousand of that is unspent gas taxes. So you would spend that, you didn't spend all your gas tax you received, so you spend that in 2024. I talked to the municipal debt. There is a change in accounting policy this year. You see something called asset retirement obligations. That's basically how much you need today to set aside to finance the closure of your landfill sites. Last year was called landfill closure and post closure liability. It's not my idea to change things. The ministry does that, public sector accounting board. It doesn't really hit your statements a lot, but if you were going through the notes, there's quite a bit of mention of that. So your net financial assets, which is your, basically your assets minus your current liabilities, is seventeen point eight million dollars. That's up one point one million from last year, two point six million from the year before. That's important. That's positive because now you have more cash assets to work with. Your assets, we kind of talked about the increase there. So in the year, there were sixty-six point five million. Those are your roads, your buildings, your equipment, et cetera. When you add the net financial assets to your capital assets, you come to your surplus, eighty-four point three million dollars, which is up to four point four million dollars that I spoke on, on the income for the year. So overall, when you look at your balance sheet, you're in a, despite all your capital projects and everything, you're in a better position at the end of the year than last year. The next page is a breakdown of your income. I won't go through all that. Of course, taxation, ten point three, budget, ten point one. There's numerous grants, some you receive every year, some you, you don't. Last, 2022, you received three hundred and thirty-three thousand for the Canada Community Revitalization Fund. That was for a trail extension. You didn't have that this year. All your user fees, of course, the big one is water and sewer for your various utilities. Garbage collection, recreation has kind of rebounded back from COVID. So that's back to where it used to be. That's good. You have noticed your investment income's higher, seven twenty-six from four sixty. You have more investments, but more importantly, interest rates are higher, so you're collecting more money there. So your total revenue, twenty point five million dollars. All your expenses, if you note that under user fees, there's recovery for grant, for drains. If you look under municipal drains, that number's higher, so they kind of cancel out. So on a kind of a cash basis, you have twenty-two point five million dollars of expenses. But then when you convert it back, where you amortize assets and so forth, sixteen point two million. And that comes back, the difference between the twenty million and sixteen is your net surplus, four point two million dollars. If you were to look at the financial statements, there is a new page at the beginning this year, something else that's set out by the public accounting standard boards. So they really emphasize that auditors are independent. This statement is from management saying that they did the financial statements. They're responsible for internal controls. And we audit the statements and we are independent and that's all true. The next page is the auditor's report. It states that it's a clean audit report. It's the standard auditor's report, so that's good. If you go through the same things I've kind of talked about, there are some notes. Note number five, if you were to scroll down, maybe six pages, seven. Go to page five of that. There's a short note about your investments, there's some small receivables, and then there's the long-term investments, which I've talked about, the eleven point three million. And that's all in GIC, so it's safe. And it's all coming due between 2024 and most of it in five years. The next page, there is a note about your debt. I said the one loan, four hundred and twenty-one thousand. It will be paid off in 2029. There is note number nine with asset retirement obligation. Talks about the two landfill sites and all that number's calculated. There's a lot of work to do that this year, so hopefully that pays off for next year. Note number 11 on the next page. It breaks down all your, your grants from the province and the federal government, et cetera. So last year, we covered a lot on drains. So you'll see from a math, for five hundred and four thousand, that's recovery for municipal drains. And also from Perth County, that has to do with municipal drains. So that's why the total grants are a little higher this year. If you keep scrolling down to the reserve page. So that, oh, yeah. So that page just breaks down. You started nineteen point four million dollars of reserves. You put in three point eight, took out four mil, four million fifty-one thousand. And you come back to the nineteen point one million dollars. Your budgeted plan to have a little lower than that, but you didn't do all your capital projects. So that's really good that you have that much in reserves after all your capital. Deferred revenue, just to show the provincial gas tax funds and the federal, five forty-six and one thirty-three. That's money you didn't spend this year. So you have that in your pocket at the end of 2023 to spend in 2024. If you go down a bit more, there's a, we do a separate statement for the library board that is eventually consolidated in what I've talked about. It's just, there's nothing outstanding there. You have surplus thirty-eight thousand and you have reserves went up from three six sixty-eight to four hundred and twenty-one thousand. And then the very last thing are your trust, trust accounts. And that's basically- And that's basically money set aside due perpetual care to look after, look after your various cemeteries. So the interest that's earned there, twenty-nine thousand, which is higher this year because of interest rates, et cetera, is forwarded to the municipality, the same number in their expenditure to look after the actual operations of the cemeteries. So in closing, I would say it was a positive year for the municipality financially. You're able to do quite a bit of six point three million capital work, keep your reserves at almost twenty million dollars. You still only have one loan and you increased your financial assets by one point two million dollars. So once again, I'd like to thank Paul and Finance Department and other departments for all the cooperation. Much appreciated. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions from members of council? No questions. You did a great job.
Paula did a great job.
And Paul, yes. We have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the presentation from Paul Seebok, CFP, comma, CA, comma, CA, comma, Seebok and Company, Chartered Professional Accountants, twenty twenty-three audited financial statements for information, and that the twenty twenty-three financial statements for the Township of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you very much. Great report.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night.
You too.
Okay, now we have no delegations. We do have two public meetings, so we're going to move to our public meetings. So I declare this public meeting to be open. This public meeting is being held to consider a proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting property currently owned by Keith Heinbach and Trevor Heinbach, concession four, West Park, Lot thirty-four, twenty-seven fifty, line twenty-nine. This meeting is an opportunity for the township to advise the public of the purpose and intent of the amendment and receive their input prior to considering adoption of implementing bylaw. If a bylaw is adopted to implement the zoning amendment, a notice of passing will be forwarded by prepaid first-class mail to various agencies of interest and others who have requested notice. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the adoption of the bylaw may be filed with a clerk no later than the date stated on the notice. Any person attending this meeting who wishes to receive written notice of a bylaw passed to implement the amendment is asked to give their name and mailing address to the clerk following this meeting. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested in writing following the meeting. All persons attending this meeting will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. I will now call on our Director of Planning for the county, Andrea Hackler, to present the planning report and recommendations. So welcome Andrea, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. I've met many of you, but not all of you, so it's a pleasure to be here for my first time. And I know you're expecting Jeff, but he's actually enjoying a vacation in Europe right now, so we're happy for him. So the first application tonight is an application for zone change and it's for a property that was, or an application that was submitted by Keith and Trevor Heinbach. And it's for lands located at two seven five zero, line twenty-nine. And the application for zone change proposes to rezone the subject lands from agricultural zone to a special agricultural zone with site-specific zoning provisions to allow for a single detached dwelling on an undersized parcel, as well as to reduce the minimum distance separation requirement from the adjacent livestock barn, or I guess it's not actually adjacent, from the livestock barn to the east. And the applicant is proposing to reduce, the original application was to reduce the minimum distance separation setback from four hundred and fifty-one meters to three hundred and twenty-six meters. However, upon further review, it was, the MDS calculations were redone based on the fact that the manure is solid as opposed to liquid. And so the actual reduction is from four hundred meters to three hundred and twenty-six meters. And so the official plan policies do support for the development of undersized existing lots of record. In this case, this is an existing lot of record. It is ten hectares as opposed to what the zoning bylaw requires to be fifteen hectares. In this case, the applicant continues to farm. I, I calculated roughly, I think it's about five acres at the front of the property, or so the southern portion of the property. And then as you can see, to the northern portion of the property is a wetland and, and natural environment. And so the applicant is actually proposing, and you know it'll be small, but so the applicant is proposing a dwelling. I don't know if I have a pointer here. I'm not gonna risk it. The applicant is proposing a dwelling to the north of the, the farmed parcel, just south of that, that tree section. And so like I said, the official plan policies do contemplate these types of uses in the case where agricultural uses are not, you know, it's not prime for, for agricultural production. However, as I said, the applicant continues, will continue to farm it and is just simply asking for the relief to add the dwelling to the property. With respect to, so there are a number of, of tests that would have to be met with respect to the official plan. And it's generally that it's, it's practical and it's not possible to continue long-term, larger farm production. So that's the case here. It's suitable for a single detached dwelling. It does not preclude the balance of the lands from being continued to be used for agricultural purposes. There's the possibility for adequate water and sewage disposal. There's adequate drainage that can be provided and it fronts onto an improved road. And so in our opinion, it meets all of those requirements. And then with respect to zoning, as I said, typically the requirement is that it be a fifteen hectare parcel. And in this case, it's ten hectares. That said, we believe that there's adequate space. It's, it's a good use of the property because it doesn't really serve many other functions, as you can see. So we are satisfied with that. With respect to the minimum distance separation, as you can see, there is a barn to the east, like the southeastern corner. And the applicant did, or sorry, the neighboring property owner did indicate that they had concerns. Our department has spoken with that neighboring property owner to let them know that they would continue to obviously operate. But then also Jeff did some calculations and he determined that the applicant could double the size of the existing livestock operation. And the MDS two setback requirement would be two hundred and seventy-nine meters. And so there's still, in our opinion, ample space to allow that barn to, to grow. And then the other thing that I wanted to point out is there is an existing dwelling that has the ACM dash sixteen zone. Sorry, it's right beside it actually, to the east of it. And that dwelling also is, is actually in fact closer than the proposed dwelling. So in light of that, we don't see, we don't have any concerns with the reduction in MDS. We don't think it'll cause any hardships to the neighboring livestock operation. And we think that it's, it's good planning to allow a dwelling on this property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Andrea. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the applicant? Would you come up to the table, please? Give your name and your address. You, you're not in opposition? You're against?
No, I'm for it. It's me. So.
Then you have to wait. You're not.
Oh, oh, sorry.
You can stay there. You can stay there. Sorry. Well, it's always something to make it to life interest. See, that's good. Anyone present who wishes to speak in support other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? So are you the applicant? I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
Trevor, sorry.
You're Trevor. Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support? Okay, if, if you would come to the table, please, give your name. Trevor, you can stay there. You're already there.
I just wanted to make.
Can you give your name and, and address, please?
Neil Whitesell, line twenty-nine, twenty-seven, twenty-four. It affects my livestock operation. I have no issues with Trevor and Trish building a house. It was just, I earn a living on this farm and I, that's my biggest concern is if it affects my livelihood. I, I don't, I don't want to say I'm opposed to it. But I was, I don't know how to say down the road, I would like to add on to the barn. Because I have children that are interested in the farm and that's my biggest concern. Like I said, I, I wish there was an agreement I could put forth that Trevor and I could agree on that if I wanted to expand even further, that I wouldn't have to be asking for his permission in the future or council's permission, I guess, to do, to carry on my operation, I guess, is what I.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say about that, but the original setbacks are in place. I, but like I said, I.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So if council takes that into consideration or whatever. Is there any way of making an agreement with these two properties? For future expansion, is?
I've never seen that done. It's usually what's on the ground now, but I, for clarification, I'm just gonna have to ask Andrea again. She did mention that about doubling the size and it would be allowed. So you could double the size of your operation in future, even if the house is built.
Yeah, okay, I guess. It's what I wanted to say, but yeah.
Okay, I understand your concerns. I'm a farmer too. I get it. I do get it. So, yes.
And I've been growing up with Trevor my whole life and I'm, I'm not here to cause him grief, but yeah, I need to make a living too. So, okay.
Okay, thank you. So right, Andrea, I'm correct in that? He could double his size of his operation, even if that house goes there?
That's correct. Jeff actually has in, in his report that it would be within the existing uncultivated footprint of the area and he says that you can double it and the setback would be two hundred and seventy-nine meters. Whereas right now, what Trevor is proposing will be, we lost it, is three hundred and, three hundred and twenty-six. So there's still, so it doesn't, the MDS one and MDS two are not the identical distances. So there's more, there'd be more allowance for a barn to expand than.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, Trevor, now you. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or speak?
You sure? I'm just here to, obviously, for any quest, field any questions or anything. I've been a lifetime resident of Perth and that actually was, like Neil said, that was my childhood property. We moved to northeast Oak in the latter of my life and now I want to go back that way. And again, I know all the neighbors and Neil knows, but I want to support anybody that's around. I know that was a concern of his, so we did do an additional study that he had mentioned he'd wanted to double the operation and I made sure that I would stay back that distance as of today's standards. So whenever he decides to do that, I'm not sure when, but as of today, I want to make sure that he was able to do that. So that was, that was something we had a discussion about after he raised a concern. But other than that, I mean, we want to be stewards of the land and it's been in our family name for sixty-five plus years and, and hopefully my kids have it too. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing no questions, council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the public meeting and bylaw two oh nine dash twenty twenty-four to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered later within the council agenda. So, thank you. Okay, we'll go to our second public meeting and I'm not gonna re, I'm going to start that. This public meeting is to consider a proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting property currently owned by Dennis and Marie Phelps, concession three, lot thirty-one, forty-two sixteen, road one forty-five. I'm not gonna read all the preamble. I believe it's the same as what I just did for the last one, so we're gonna jump right down to the planner and we have Joshua with us tonight, so the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of council. I have to be with you tonight. I know there's a lot of planning on the agenda, so I hope we don't put you to sleep by the end of it. But here we go. I just wanted to clarify, do I have to control the, I do, awesome. Okay, cool. Okay, zoning bylaw amendment application D fourteen Z ten twenty twenty-four was submitted by Montith Ritzma Phillips Professional Corporation on behalf of Dennis and Marie Phelps to rezone the lands mistakenly known as forty-two sixteen, road one forty-five. The application is a condition of consent to sever application B zero five dash twenty-four, which was approved by the Perth East, sorry, Perth East Council on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Application B zero five dash twenty-four severed the existing single detached dwelling from the farming operation. The retained agriculture lands are to be sold to Andrew Timmermans and Danny, the lawyer, both of whom are controlling shareholders in existing farming operations in the township. The severed lands outlined in yellow in the photo before you are proposed to be rezoned from the agricultural zone to special agricultural zone one or A dash one. The A dash one zone is used to permit non-farm residences, residential uses within the agricultural areas where they would otherwise be prohibited by provincial and county policy. The retained lands outlined in red in the photo before you are proposed to rezone the agricultural zone to the agricultural, to special agricultural zone five or A dash five. The A dash five zone is used to protect existing agricultural operations by prohibiting the development of any new residential use, permanent or temporary. Staff received comments from the Blue Water Recycling Agency and the Eppertam River Constellation Authority. Neither agency had any objections. As per statutory requirements, public notice of application was provided to the public. No public comments were received. The subject application is found to be consistent with provincial and county policy. As a result, planning staff are supportive of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments and recommend that the Perth East Council approve zoning bylaw amendment application D fourteen Z ten twenty twenty-four. I would be happy to answer any questions regarding this application at this time.
Okay, thank you. Or is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application, speaking against? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one. Does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to address any of the questions or comments? Oh, sorry, no, don't want to leave that one. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? I believe they're here. Are there any questions from members of council? Nope. Okay, council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the public meeting, bylaw two ten dash twenty twenty-four to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered later within the council agenda. The public meeting is now concluded and we will continue with the regular meeting of council. So we do have a motion for our first public meeting. And it reads that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner dated August seventh, twenty twenty-four entitled zoning bylaw amendment D fourteen dash Z zero nine dash two zero two four dash P E, submitted by Darrell Bender on behalf of Keith and Trevor Heinbach, affecting land described as West Park Lot Thirty-four, concession four, Southeast Oak Ward, Township of Perth East, twenty-seven fifty, line twenty-nine for information. And that council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section thirty-four of the Planning Act with respect to zoning bylaw amendment two oh nine dash twenty twenty-four and that council approved zoning bylaw amendment two oh nine dash twenty twenty-four. Moved by Jerry, second by Andrew. All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, and our second public meeting is that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner dated August seventh, twenty twenty-four entitled zoning bylaw amendment D fourteen dash Z ten dash twenty twenty-four dash P E submitted by Montith Ritzma Phillips Professional Corporation on behalf of Dennis and Marie Phelps affecting lands legally described as Lot Thirty-one, concession three, Alice Ward, forty-two one six, road one forty-five for information, that council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section thirty-four of the Planning Act with respect to zoning bylaw amendment two ten dash twenty twenty-four and that council approved zoning bylaw amendment two ten dash twenty twenty-four. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. You got that? You're good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to public hearings. We do have two of them tonight as well. So the first public hearing is council will now temporarily adjourned to sit as committee of adjustment pursuant to section forty-five of the Planning Act. I now declare this public hearing open. This public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property. Currently owned by Van Harton Surveying Inc., William J. Geese Construction, described as plan forty-four M eighty. Lot ten, Milverton Ward, thirty-eight Avery Place, Milverton. The purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons. With respect to the proposed application and receive their input and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application. But are asked to withhold comments on this application until all present have been given opportunity to be heard. Any person who wishes to receive written notice. Of the decision made by the committee of adjustment is asked to email their name and mailing address to the Secretary of Treasury at this time. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the decision may at, made at this hearing may be filed with. By the applicant, the municipality, the minister, or prescribed utility providers with the Secretary of Treasury no later than August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested at this time. I will now call on our student planner Harleen to present the planning report and recommendations. So welcome, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This minor variance application numbered A oh eight dash twenty twenty-four is for lands described as lot ten. Plan forty-four M eighty, Milverton in the township of Perth East. And it is municipally known as thirty-eight Avery Place. The application was submitted by Van Harton Surveying Inc. on behalf of W M J Geese Construction Limited. The applicant is requesting relief to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling. The relief requested is to increase the maximum lot coverage from forty percent to forty-two percent to accommodate the dwelling. The township of Perth East has legal ownership of a one point three meter. Wide part lot that abuts the northern side lot line of lot ten. This part lot is outlined in red and is described as. Part two, plan forty-four R dash five nine nine three. In June of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, sorry, Perth East Council carried a resolution declaring. That this part lot has surplus and the part lot is in the process of being formally conveyed and consolidated with lot ten. Therefore, the relief is subject to the condition that lot ten, plan forty-four M eighty must be consolidated with part two, plan forty-four R dash five nine nine three. To the satisfaction of the township of Perth East. The subject lands including part two are approximately six hundred and seventy square meters in size. And have a lot rentage of approximately seventeen point five meters. The subject lands are designated service urban area in the Perth County official plan and residential in the Milverton official plan. Single detached dwelling is a permitted use of the subject lands. The property is zoned special residential low density or um, R one dash three in the township of Perth East zoning bylaw, which sets the maximum lot coverage requirement of forty percent. The requested relief from forty percent to forty-two percent maintains the intent of the maximum lot coverage requirement of the zoning bylaw. As an adequate area remains to accommodate setbacks, amenities, space grading, drainage, and parking. The dwelling meets all other zoning bylaw requirements. The requested relief, relief can be considered minor in nature and desirable for the area. As dwelling will be of a similar size with similar setbacks as other properties within the neighborhood. The requested relief is not anticipated to have any significant adverse effects. And with that, planning staff do recommend approval at this time and I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? And does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation? And joining us on the screen, we have Agent Tracy Lesperance.
Hi, good evening. Yes, my name is Tracy Lesperance and I'm with Van Harton Surveying. Um, as Harleen has mentioned, uh, we are looking to increase the lot coverage from forty percent to forty-two percent. We do feel it's minor in nature and uh, we also agree with the condition that would be attached to this uh, variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee members? If not, the committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. And the motion is that the township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment received a report prepared by the student planner. Dated August seventh, twenty twenty-four entitled application for minor variance. D thirteen dash A zero eight dash two zero two four dash P E submitted by Van Harton Surveying Inc. On behalf of William J. Geese Construction Limited affecting lands described as lot ten, plan forty-four M eighty. Milverton Ward Township of Perth East, thirty-eight Avery Place, Milverton for information. And that the committee approved minor variance D thirteen dash A zero eight dash two zero two four dash P E affecting land described above. As it relates to number one, relief from section twelve point two point seven of the Perth East zoning bylaw to increase the maximum lot coverage. From forty percent to forty-two percent to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling. And number two, conditional on the owner confirming that lot ten registered plan forty-four M eighty has been consolidated with part two. Forty-four R dash five nine nine three to the satisfaction of the township of Perth East. We need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and our next public hearing. Is, this public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by Dave and Laura Albrecht. And described as plan five four six, lot eight, Morningside Ward, forty-four forty, Holmes Drive, Newton. I'm not gonna read all that preamble. We're gonna jump down to our planner Joshua. To present the planning report. So Joshua, the floor is yours.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Uh, minor variance application D thirteen A zero nine twenty twenty-four was submitted by Dave and Laura Albrecht to request a minor zoning bylaw relief. For the lands municipally known as forty-four forty, Holmes Drive in Newton. Application A zero nine twenty-four has been submitted to request relief from section five point one point three point five of the Perth. Perth East zoning bylaw. The requested relief would allow for a maximum lot coverage for accessory buildings and structure area on the subject lands to be increased from five percent. To five point five percent. This would allow for the development of a covered patio on the west side of the shed currently under construction on the subject lands. The Planning Act outlines for tests for minor variance. Um, we find that section six point five point four point four of the Fer- Perth County Official Plan supports. The development of uses for outdoor amenity spaces in the village of Newton. Section nine, Hamilton Village Residential of the Perth East zoning bylaw likewise supports the development of outdoor amenity spaces on the subject lands. The requested increase of maximum lot coverage of accessory buildings of zero point five percent on the subject land translates to a maximum. Accessory building area of one hundred and twenty-four point eight five square meters. Uh, this is an increase of eleven point three five square meters from the current maximum of three hundred and thirteen point five square meters. Planning staff consider an increase of eleven point three five square meters to be minor in nature. As a result of the previous, the requested relief is considered by planning staff to be appropriate planning for the subject lands. Staff received comments from the Blue Water Recycling Agency, which stated they had no concerns with the application. As per statutory requirements, public notice of the subject application was provided. No public comments have been received. The subject application is found to be consistent with provincial and county policy. As a result, planning staff are supportive of the subject application. And recommend that the Perth East Council approve minor variance application D thirteen A zero nine twenty twenty-four. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation? Or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation? Seeing no one, are there questions from committee members? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. That's not so much a question. The, yeah, photo on page one nineteen says Milverton Ward. Basically, I would say in Milverton, Morningside, but I don't know if that's a big deal for the process.
That was, that is a typo and it should say Morningside Ward, you're, I do not bel-
Morningside, right, or no?
Yeah, Morningside. So, whi- which page is?
I believe it's one nineteen.
Uh, okay, I, I have a different numbering system. You give me a second.
Am I correct or no? The report phone, sorry.
Oh, I see. Don't know. I don't think so, no.
Oh, okay, just curious. I wanna make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, uh, any other questions? The committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. The Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment received a report prepared by the planner dated August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Entitled Minor Variants Application D thirteen dash A zero nine dash twenty twenty-four dash P E submitted by Dave and Laura Albrecht. For lands described as plan five four six, lot eight, Morningside Ward Township of Perth East. Forty-four forty, Holmes Drive for information. And that the committee approved minor variance application D thirteen dash A zero nine dash two zero two four dash P E as it relates to. Number one, relief from section five point one point three point five of the Perth East zoning bylaw. To increase the maximum lot coverage for accessory buildings and structure area from five percent to five point five percent. To facilitate the construction of a covered patio on the west side. Of a under construction detached shed in the rear yard, subject to the following conditions. And we have one condition that the owner. Obtain the necessary building permit within the two years of the approval of the minor variance. We need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Bob, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. I declare this public hearing closed. Okay, now we're going to move to our planning. The first item in planning is we have a consent to sever application submitted by uh. Uh, the firm of Monteith Ritzma and Phillips and this is for Grunestage Dairy Farms. We have Joshua with us. To present, go ahead Joshua, the floor is yours.
Alrighty, zoning bylaw amendment, nope, that's not right. Consent to sever application. Uh, a lot of applications tonight. D ten B twenty-two twenty twenty-four was submitted by Monteith Ritzma Phillips Professional Corporation on behalf of Grunestage Dairy Farm to sever a surplus farm. Dwelling from the lands municipally known as fifty eighteen Perth Road one thirty-five. Uh, surplus farm dwellings severances are regulated by section five point six point three point one of the Perth County Official Plan. Planning staff are satisfied that all provisions outlined by section five point six point three point one are met by the subject application. The subject lands are currently split zoned between agricultural zone, Hamilton Village Residential, and Parks and Recreation. The Hamilton slash Village Residential and Parks and Recreation areas on the subject lands will not be affected by this application. As a condition of consent, uh, the applicant will be required to submit a zoning bylaw amendment application for the subject lands to rezone. The severed lands to special agricultural zone one to allow for non-farm residential use. Uh, and to rezone the retained lands to special agricultural zone five to prohibit the development of any new residential use in order to protect the existing farming operation. Staff received comments from the Blue Water Recycling Agency, the Eppertem River Conservation Authority, and Hydro One. No agency had any objections. Uh, as per statutory requirements, public notice of application was provided. No public comments were received. The subject application is found to be consistent with provincial and county policy. As a result, planning staff are supportive of this subject application. The, and, and recommend that the Perth East Council advise the land division committee that it supports uh, application B ten, no. D ten B twenty-two twenty twenty-four. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the reports? Nope, okay, seeing no questions. We do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner dated August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Entitled Consent to Sever application B twenty-two dash twenty-four submitted by Monteith Ritzma Phillips Professional Corporation. On behalf of Grunestage Dairy Farms Limited for lands described as concession eleven, lot twenty-one and twenty-two, Ellis Ward. Township of Perth East, five zero one eight, road one thirty-five for information. And that council advised the land division committee or its delegated authority that the township of Perth East supports the application. B twenty-two dash twenty-four is subject to the following conditions. So the first. Six conditions are, these are all Perth East conditions. Number one, that all the taxes have been paid in full. Number two, all the financial requirements have been met. Number three, that the application schedule for municipal, for municipal drains in the area are reviewed and updated. Number four, uh, that the amendment to the township Perth East implementing zoning bylaw has been adopted to rezone the proposed severed lot. To permit only a dwelling and accessory uses, buildings, and structures. And to rezone the retained farm lot to prohibit any new permanent residential dwellings. Number five. Severed and retained lots each have an assigned separate municipal address. And number six, that the road access to the severed retained parcels are to their satisfaction. And then these four items are from the county. And number one, that the certificate of the official be scanned and attached to the electronic registration of the transfer. Number two. Uh, the land division committee be provided with a description that is consistent with the application and equal to that required. For registration of a deed slash transfer or other conveyance of interest in the land. Uh, number three, that. Uh, the property owner has entered into an agreement with the county of Perth to prohibit no, any new permanent residential dwellings on the retained farm lot. And number four. An undertaking be received from a solicitor stating that the retained farm parcel will be sold to Grunestage Dairy Farms Limited. As the existing farm dwelling is surplus to their needs. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Hugh, second by Jerry. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Joshua.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Uh, and our next one is a part lot control application submitted by Cedar Rose Holmes and we have Harleen about to do that, so.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This application for part lot control numbered P L C O two twenty twenty-four is for lands described as lot thirty. Plan forty-four M eighty, Milverton in the township of Perth East. And it is municipally known as one oh nine and one eleven Pew Street. The owner is requesting exemption from part lot control to be granted for parts one and two of lot thirty identified in reference plan. Forty-four R dash six two four one for two units within a semi-detached dwelling. If approved, the exemption will allow the owners to register the reference plan shown on the slides. So that each of the two semi-detached units will be separate conveyable lots. The subject, the subject lands are designated residential in the Mitchell, sorry, in the Milverton Board official plan. And the dwelling conforms with this designation. Staff are also satisfied that both units and parts meet the requirements of the Perth East zoning bylaw. The county of Perth is the delegated approval authority on daily planning act for bylaws to remove part lot control. The removal of part lot control to establish lot lines between units of a semi-detached dwelling is an acceptable method of lot creation under the Planning Act. If approved, the bylaw shall be in effect for two years, after which time section fifty. Provisions of the Planning Act will be reinstated. And with that, planning staff do recommend approval at this time and I can answer any questions.
Questions from council? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the student planner. Dated August seventh, twenty twenty-four entitled part lot control application. P L C dash zero two dash two zero two four dash P E submitted by Cedar Rose Holmes Inc. on behalf of William J. Geese Construction Limited. For lands illegally described as lot thirty, plan forty-four M eighty, Milverton Ward in the township of Perth East. One oh nine dash one eleven Pew Street, Milverton for information. And that council approved the application by Cedar Rose Holmes. For the exemption from part lot control on lands described above and forward the bylaw to the county of Perth for approval. And that the approved bylaw be provided to the township of Perth East to be registered on title. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Harleen. Enjoy the rest of your night. And Andrea, you too. So, good to see us. Okay, now we're going to move on and with the council's permission, we're going to move the fire report. Uh, above C A O. I think Gary and Jess have, uh, are ready to do the report now, if that's okay with everybody. So we're gonna have the community risk. Assessment. So Gary and, and Jess, welcome. And if you just wanna come to the desk. Come on, Gary, don't be shy. Come on Gary, don't be shy. Oh, Bill's gonna start, okay, Bill, take it away.
You, you've done enough talking for a while, we'll give you a break, how's that? Okay. So, uh, thank you Mayor and council, uh, tonight, I'm definitely pleased to, uh, co-present uh, the twenty twenty four Community Risk Assessment for the township. Uh, as everyone knows, it's required by the Ontario Regulation, uh, three seventy eight, which came into effect uh, five years ago, um, but, uh, had, was mandated that it had to be developed by July first of this year. Uh, the CRA, just some background, it's a systematic approach to identifying, analyzing, evaluating and prioritizing risks to public safety. Uh, the process helps us make informed decisions regarding the provision specifically of fire protection services, uh, through the township. Um, the CRA encompasses the nine community profiles uh, outlined in the regulation, ensuring a thorough assessment of public safety risks. Uh, this CRA has been dealt, developed by our dedicated staff, me excluded, uh, with invaluable technical support, uh, from the County of Perth GIS Department. Uh, special thanks to Gary and his team for their extensive assistance in creating this, uh, electronic document. This, this CRA, the, the formatting of it, it's designed for easy accessibility uh, and user-friendly navigation. Uh, it will be hosted on our website, uh, making it readily available, uh, to all community members. Uh, the digital format not only enhances accessibility, but it allows for real-time updates as our community and our associated risks evolve, uh, especially when compared to a traditional paper document that, uh, normally you would be presented with. The insights gained from this CRA will guide us in managing community risks effectively. Uh, this includes determining our optimal levels of service, uh, designing public fire safety education programs, uh, conducting fire code inspections, uh, and enforcement initiatives, uh, instructuring our emergency response capabilities, and, uh, the CRA definitely ensures that we're meeting our legislative obligations under the Fire Protection and Prevention Act. So now, I'll get to the exciting part. I'm gonna head over to Jess, um, our man assistant and public educator, and she's gonna give you a detailed walkthrough, uh, of the CRA. Uh, Jess has definitely dedicated a significant effort to this project, uh, and I'm confident you'll find the presentation impressive. And if technically it goes crazy, Gary's here to, uh, jump in and, uh, and help us. So, I'll pass it over to Jess.
Now, it's gonna take my mic over. We're having technical difficulties, so just give us a minute here to get it straightened out. You wanna say anything Gary, while we're waiting?
Just a static paper document that a lot of people would get and put on a shelf somewhere and not touch. And as well, it, it does lead towards the, um, ongoing data maintenance behind something like this so that, um, as new information comes in or, um, you know, I, I think these have to be done every year, is that?
Annually.
Reviewed annually. Every five, so rather than waiting until five years again, we can actually do it, um, you know, as the time, uh, as, as the window of time moves forward, so. And it will help keep the data more relevant as well. So, overall, I think it's a really, uh, interesting way of presenting something like this.
Okay?
Okay, I think we're on board now. Thank you Mayor and council for having me and, uh, allowing me to present this to you. Uh, as Chief Hunter mentioned, it's been, uh, a, a project in the making and it is my pleasure to, to present it to you and show you what we've collected. Um, and just an overview of how to use the Community Risk Assessment site. Um, this is what they call in, I guess, the tech world, a storyboard. Um, and it is more or less a story that will follow through the nine different profiles um, as we go along, and you'll see as we scroll the sort of user-friendly, um, abilities of the storyboard and to look at the information and have it presented in a, in a way that, um, sort of the average person can see it and understand it. So, when you scroll down, the first thing you kinda see along the top here is, um, just sort of basically our, our home spot where you can navigate to each of the nine profiles, um, from the top. And as you see when we scroll down, that bar across the top will stay with, um, the wording and the verbiage as we go down. So you can click back through to anything, if you'd seen something previous in it that you wanna go back to, you can easily navigate back to that. So as we scroll down, the introduction is more or less, uh, I won't go through everything specifically, just more or less how to use it. But you scroll down, you'll see we've got some information about the fire department, each of our stations here, um, and the apparatus that are at those stations. The next little bit in the introduction just talks about, uh, what Bill mentioned at the beginning, what the Community Risk Assessment is, the regulation that we were required to do it under, and how we undertook the project and what areas, um, in those profiles that we had to look at and collect information for. Um, so the geographic profile, building stock profile, critical infrastructure, demographics, hazard profile, public safety response profile, the community services profile, the economic profile, and the past loss and event history profile. And again, it just goes over that we have to review it annually and that it needs to be redone every five years. Um, like Gary had mentioned, in this format, it made sense to present it this way and put it into a digital format than it did to do a paper copy. Um, this way, we're able to update it annually easily as we have more data come in um, from our incidents and other things that may change in the community, um, especially building stock. That's a big one that can change, and especially as we get more industrial occupancies and that type of thing uh, throughout the municipality, it is, uh, it's important to be able to update it regularly. So the geographic profile, the nice thing about this is, and this was, uh, the GIS department, is the mapping features that we are able to include and the interactivity of this. Um, so in the geographic features, transportation and water bodies, trails, and potential forest fire risk, which is pretty low, um, in our township, but, um, are all important things to consider um, when it comes to emergency response. So as you go down, you can click on each of these, and it will present you a new map to the right-hand side. So transportation, it just basically shows all of our, our roadways, the fact that we have railways and the crossings on there. Uh, if you click on the water bodies and wetlands, it basically shows you all the water throughout, uh, our township and, uh, the big old swamp, as we call it, in the middle there. Uh, the next ones are trails, we, we don't have, uh, a lot of trails, but we do have trails and we have definitely, as a fire department, responded on these trails, so it's important to include those. And then the potential forest fire risk, obviously you can see we don't have a big risk there, but it is also important to include. And then you can keep scrolling down, building stock profile, again, there's just some verbiage there, but it has an interactive map here. So it comes up, you can zoom in on the map, just on the bottom, there's a, a zoom feature. Um, so you can see the different spots kinda throughout and what, uh, types of occupancies there are. So, the occupancies are based off of the Ontario Building Code, um, and that's how they're, um, grouped on the charts here as well around the map. Um, again, here, this feature, you can get rid of that if you want to. Um, and the home button here will just basically return you to the standard map. Again, for critical infrastructure, this information all came from, um, the HIRA, the Community, um, Hazard Assessment. And we have mapped the water location, so again, an interactive map that shows you where our hydrants are and where any, we have, uh, multiple underground tanks that we utilize for water sources, um, as well as a couple of, um, water sources here, like a water sup- uh, supply, so whether that be a pond, I believe this is the, um, the gravel pit. So you can see those on there, and then critical infrastructure, our things in our community, um, like hospitals, um, EMS stations, fire stations, schools. We've also, um, mapped out our parochial schools on here, we didn't have that information previous kind of available. So we've, uh, put those all on there as well. And you can just kinda scroll through and see everything that's available to us. Demographics, sometimes these are a little bit hard to put the information in a nice presentable manner. Um, the software that we use, community analysts are that Gary, I should say, utilize to make these, these profiles, um, presents the information quite well, it's important to know our, our population, age and, uh, men versus women, education, household income. This sort of all relates to, we know that in the fire service, the most affected people by fire are under the age of five and over the age of sixty five. And so we do have higher numbers in those populations, and those are the ones we'd like to focus to our, our public education on. So, these numbers are important to know, same with, um, residential, um, units and dwellings in the township. Uh, when we see later in the statistics, we'll see that, um, residential structures are still the, the highest, um, affected by fire, so. And then, of course, the, uh, languages most spoken, English obviously being number one, but we do have a lot of Almish, Menehuit and Low German who live here. And so it is a bit of a barrier for us to public education and prevention, um, in those areas, so it's important to have that data available. The hazard profile, um, uh, all of this basically came from, uh, the emergency, uh, management and our HIRA in the county. And there are a few links in here, so you can see here, you can click on this, it'll open to the Government of Canada's Emergency Preparedness page, so they can access that for more information. And anything on the, uh, uh, CRA here on the website that has an underline is a link out to something as well, so you can click on that and look for more information. And the hazard profile risk, this was, um, sort of a mandated thing as a part of this as well. So basically what we took was the top ten, um, hazards from the county, and we've put them into the risk level matrix provided by the guideline for the CRA. Um, so that's sort of the information here. Again, anything with a clickable thing, we wanted to prevent, or Gary being the tech person, wanted to prevent a lot of what we call doom scrolling, so we wanna just keep going and going. So if there's spots on here that have an underline, it will basically just allow you to click down to that next thing to be able to read it without having to scroll all the way down. So just a few kinda nice features that keep people from doing the scrolling thing. And at the bottom here, we also have links out to, um, the Perth County and the Perth East Emergency, um, websites, if people want more information. And as we go forward, I would think that we'll add to this as far as links out to maybe some public education resources and that type of thing. Um, so we will look at expanding this storyboard to include, um, other things. Um, public safety profile, um, it's a fairly simple one here, it just kind of shows the different agencies that respond with the fire department, so police, EMS, um, we have our GFL, Spills Action, that type of thing. Community services, uh, similar to that, it's just those services that are, also could help us out in the event of a major emergency. So two one one Ontario, our community outreach, a lot of our local service clubs and that type of thing are listed here because those are people we could call on, uh, in the event of a large-scale emergency. The economic profile, so we took the information because it very matched what we already had in our Perth County, um, profile. So we more or less just took that information, and another sort of feature of this is anytime there's an arrow over to the side here, you can click on it and scroll across, and it will present the information to you, again, just so we're not scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. And then the last profile is, um, maybe the most important one, past loss and event history. It also has an associated map with it, so we've mapped all of our fire calls from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three that we've responded to. And on the map, you can actually click on these little calls, and it'll tell you the date. Um, description is basically the cause, and then what station responded to that, so there's a little bit of extra information there. And then same with the carbon monoxide calls as well, so you can kinda see how many we've attended. And this will be information too, as we go forward, we'll have a certain number of years that will have this data. The data on the other end, whatever kind of the last years that we phase out, that data is still gonna be housed and kept, so if we need to access it at a future time, we can. And then, uh, the last part of it in the past loss is that we compare our statistics in Perth East with the province as a whole. So, in order to do that, some of these stats were pretty hard to look at, so we wanted to make some easy charts that could be viewed. So again, with the comparisons, we kind of have a summary of all the fires, so total number, and then broken down into where those fires were. And then you can see, if you click to the right, that you see that automatic kinda comparison between our stats and, uh, province stats. So there's a few, there's the overall fires, um, the number of fires in the other category. This one's important for us because many of our fires do occur in non, uh, Ontario Building Code structures, meaning barns and sheds. We have a very large agricultural community, so many of our, uh, fires attended unfortunately are barns and sheds and that type of nature. Uh, the next one is the grouping, um, for those OBC groupings, the total number of fires. And again, you can see here, uh, Perth East is big in the other category because we do have so many of those fires, which is very similar to the province actually as well, so you can kinda do a quick comparison of the two. And then the next one is ignition sources, again, a quick comparison, um, between the two, it's easy to look at. Uh, heating equipment, um, chimneys, et cetera, are our biggest one, and electrical and mechanical, um, which kinda falls in line with the types of structures being just barns and sheds that we attend, those tend to be the causes of those fires. And then the last one is just non-fire calls, so obviously as the fire department, we respond to more than just fires. Um, so medical calls, uh, other responses, motor vehicle collisions, other public hazards, if there's a hydro line on fire, that type of thing. Um, and in Perth East, we respond mostly, uh, to other calls, our rescue calls, meaning motor vehicle accidents and that type of thing, and in the province, kinda comparatively, they respond to more medical resuscitator calls. And then the last one is the treatment options, so this one was broken down by each of the, uh, nine profiles. And if we scroll to the bottom here, we have, um, these charts that tell us the profile, and then the top issues or risks within that profile, and then whether or not, um, we're gonna accept the risk, transfer the risk, mitigate the risk. And then you can see up here, if that kind of, or avoid the risk, and that gives you a summary. So these are also in sequence here, and they follow along um, with each of the profiles, and you can kinda click over through them and see all of the recommended, um, things or things that we're maybe already doing to address these risks. And then the last is the summary, and at the very last, so the OFM, um, is also sort of on board with the, um, the GIS and, and mapping things and doing spatial maps. Um, so we also included a link to the, um, province's fire, there you go, uh, Community Fire Risk Reduction, Reduction Dashboard. Um, so again, people can click on that link, they can come in here, and they can see, they can search Perth East up here. So it's just another form of information, if people were interested, they could, um, come here and see that as well. And of course, this was developed by us, and I really do wanna thank Gary, he has been instrumental in creating this document. Um, when the project was first given to me, and the thought of creating, you know, a hundred-page document that not many people wanted to look at didn't seem very appealing. So this, to me, was a great way to present it and be able to add to this moving forward. Thank you, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thank you both for all you've done to, uh, make this happen and build as well, so it's great. Questions, Amanda?
Just, uh, um, a couple of comments and a couple of questions, so great.
Just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. So great presentation, really love how it's all laid out. I was really surprised when we broke down the languages, that Dutch was not featured, and French was. So that was a bit surprising to me because of the large Dutch farming community. So I don't know whether that's because perhaps they identify, because they speak English, or how, just how they identify themselves. So I was just curious about that, that that didn't come up in the presentation. And then just like some very small questions. So obviously, this has been presented to us. I'm assuming there'll be internal presentations to our firefighters. And then my other question is, so there's a lot of great information here, who, because I know there was a comment about like potential for future adding like links to education pieces. So like, who can all access this information? The reason I ask is actually, I hate to ask this type of question, but like, I worry about some of this information being used in the wrong way. In the sense of like somebody, because it's basically a risk profile. And so like, is it public knowledge? Like, is it, like, it's technically public because it's here tonight? So I was just curious about if there's been ever thought to that. I mean, that's, I guess, the province, but I was just more so a bit maybe surprised about that. Maybe that's nothing to be concerned about, but I just thought that was a bit interesting.
Who's gonna answer?
I can't, I can't answer the question about the Dutch language, but we will definitely look into that. And the presentation of the stations, yes, part of the rollout will be to the firefighters, because there is information in there that's certainly critical for them to be able to access. The, the, the information, the data that we've used in this has all come from public sources. There isn't any, there isn't any confidential information that we've used here. Yeah, it's just the, yes. So I don't anticipate any issues along that line. If something does arise, we would certainly address it at that time.
I can just quickly speak to the, the language. It just, we took those stats from Statistics Canada, and so we just picked out the languages that were identified most within our township. So that's why it's specifically, I want to say that probably the Dutch dialect is hidden within the German. We just didn't put them out. Yes.
If, if I may on that address, I thank you for the question. I don't know if you've ever looked at Stats Canada data, and it's, the, the community analyst actually helped out quite a bit because it's one of those things that are able to get in there. And as Jess said, they have a breakdown of sort of the higher-level language of what I guess you'd call what the, the region it comes from, and it does break it down into that. But if that is something, we can certainly check into it and make sure that, that Dutch is included. French was included because it is one of the two official languages of Canada, and we just thought that would be, you know, it's kind of the way a lot of things are presented with French, English, and then other, but we can certainly look into the Dutch component, and where does that fall under the Germanic languages as they, as they classify it up, that is the larger language group.
Okay, other questions, comments? Mike?
I just had one, Gary, maybe it's more clarification point around kind of the live data piece. So yeah, there's an annual requirement, so well, and again, you pull data from Stats Canada, from our counties' GIS. Will that, that be like the Stats Canada, you know, as it relates to the community profiles, the cultural background, and also the types, will that be live? How does, what does that look like from an update standpoint, those that are coming from kind of outside sources, if you know what I mean?
Yes, thank you for the question. So the community analyst, we'll call it a module. So it's an extra feature that we get access to as, as part of our licensing with Esri software. So the infographics that you're looking at are not necessarily live, but what we can do is go back into the template every time we need to do a review. And because it's, it's basically, I don't want to get technical, but they call it a variable. So that variable gets pulled. And relatively speaking, I say that now, it should be very easy and quick to update. With regards to the data that is housed, whether it's by the county of Perth or the township of Perth East, because a lot of the fire data did come from, from Perth East Fire Department database. That is where we will work collaboratively, and it is housed in a, in a shared database that the county can access, or any users that have authorization from Perth East can also get access to and edit as well.
Okay, any other questions? Now, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East. Oh, sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
Just on the evolution, I guess, of any plan, a number of years ago, the Snowville Clubs put up signs, nine oh ones, identification signs, field markers, which are quite helpful. Specifically for EMS, right? Because otherwise, they have no idea where they're going. So I assume it'll continue to evolve to add things like that. The, the phone app that's come out recently, the what, three words? Again, I heard a little bit about it, and now you hear absolutely nothing. I think it's a great application in something like this to incorporate for anyone to pinpoint their location. And yet, I haven't heard anything since it was released here. So it's just really a comment that I, I hope that other trails will be identified for easy application for any member of the public, but especially first responders. And then if there's anything else that can be added in future years to make things easier for people to understand, include it, right?
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay, then we have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the manager of fire services slash fire chief and the fire administrative administrative assistant slash public educator dated August seven, twenty twenty-four, entitled Community Risk Assessment, FIR-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-nine for information. And further, that council, in accordance with OREG three-seven-eight slash eighteen, endorsed the Community Risk Assessment CRA as written and presented. Moved by Amanda, second by Jerry, all in favor, carried. Thank you both. And Bill? Okay, now we're going to move on to CAO. First item is the Noise Complaint Agenda, item six-point-one-three from July ninth. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly preface the report that I don't see this as the end as it relates to this particular issue. This was more of an update, and I didn't address that very well through the recommendation. I can further update council. I had a conversation this afternoon with the president from BenMet, so I've opened up conversations and communications with them as well to try to make sure that we come to a reconciliation that works for both parties. They seem quite open to working with us, the township, and are aware of the concerns that have been raised. So I do think there's more to come out of this, so I don't want, I don't want this report to necessarily be seen as kind of the end of the conversation. I didn't, the reason for the report is so the council knows that from staff perspective, we are moving forward and trying to address the resolution that council passed. So I, I just wanted to preface the report with that, and certainly we'll try to address any questions that council may have.
Okay, any questions of the report? Andrew?
Not so much a question, Mary, I could just maybe a comment that appreciate the work. It's, it's not easy. It looks a few things that I've noticed, at least. I'm not sure what everybody else knows, but the hours of operation is a big one, it seems to be in the wheelhouse. But, you know, it's, I'm glad that everybody's willing to find some common ground, and I hope that we can find some sooner rather than later. I appreciate the work staff's done on this. So there's a lot of good stuff in the report, and I think we're getting closer to understanding the problem.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the chief administrative officer and manager of public excuse me, manager of building and planning slash chief building official dated August seven, twenty twenty-four, entitled Noise Complaint Agenda, item six-point-one-point-three, July nine, twenty twenty-four, follow-up report, CAO-two-zero-two-four-dash-twelve, CBO-two-zero-two-four-dash-eleven for information. Moved by Amanda, second by Andrew, all in favor, carried. Okay, and our next one is the Employment Betterment Committee. Mike?
Thanks, Mary Riggots. Yeah, I think the, the report itself covers, I think, the intent. This is an idea that has come forward in terms of a way to further engage our staff and to give them opportunities to raise items of interest from a betterment standpoint. Certainly, we want to be engaging as an organization, and we think there's probably lots of really great ideas that are out there amongst our staff, but I'm also in particular cautious that I want it to come in an orderly manner, in terms of, especially when we're addressing policy change that that council's given a real opportunity around that. So that's the intent of kind of formalizing a committee and having them work collaboratively and, and present their ideas in a formal setting for council to give consideration to. So certainly open to any questions.
Okay, any questions of the report? See no questions. We do have a motion. That the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the chief administrative officer dated August seven, twenty twenty-four, entitled Employee Betterment Committee, CAO-two-zero-two-four-dash-thirteen for information. And further, that council endorsed the introduction of Employee Betterment Committee and the associated terms of reference. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor, carried. Okay, we'll do the clerks' items, and then we're going to have a quick break. So the first item under the clerk is request for repair and improvement. Eric?
Thank you. So yes, we received a section seventy-eight petition for a request for repaired improvement on the Macloy Municipal Drain. This actually is signed by the province of Ontario, as it's on the G-to-G trail. It's a box covert that runs under the trail, and it's beyond disrepair now. So they're just looking to have an engineer appointed eventually. So we will need to circulate this with the Conservation Authority, and then we'll bring it back to council to appoint an engineer. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No questions. We have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received the request for repair and improvement, section seventy-eight of the Drainage Act by Property Owner Management Board Secretary C-dash care of FID Leonard, Director of Real Estate Operations for the Macloy Municipal Drain Lot Two, Concession Two, Mornington Ward Township of Perth East for information. And further, that in accordance with section seventy-eight of the Drainage Act, the appointment of an engineer will be considered at the September seventeen, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of council, subsequent to the notice advising of the proposed drainage works being sent to the Secretary Treasurer of the Conservation Authority that has jurisdiction over the lands affected. We need a mover and a secondary, moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor, carried. Okay, the next one is engineer appointment, the Herbert Municipal Drain. Eric?
Yep, thank you. So this one's coming back from the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of council. We are looking to appoint Dietrich Engineering as it was requested by the petitioner. The petition was circulated with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority. As of writing this report, we have not received any correspondence, but they will still be considered first, but they will still be kept in the loop throughout the project. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions of the report? We have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the Development and Drainage Coordinator dated August seven, twenty twenty-four, entitled Engineer Appointment, Herbert Municipal Drain, DDC-two-zero-two-four-dash-twenty-nine for information. And further, that council appoint Dietrich Engineering Limited to prepare an engineer's report under section seventy-eight of the Drainage Act for the Herbert Municipal Drain Lot Thirty-One, Concession Three, Alice Ward Township of Perth East. Moved by Bob, second by Amanda, all in favor, carried. And the next one is withdrawal notification of the Crampian Municipal Drain. Eric?
Thank you. So again, at the June eighteenth regular meeting of council, council received a section four petition, or petition from property owners Derek Schultz and Ashley McCutcheon. After consultations with the engineer, Dietrich Engineering, and the Conservation Authority, it was deemed that it would not be feasible to run a municipal, an open ditch municipal drain through a designated wetland area. So the applicants or the petitioner's have withdrawn their application, and they're going to look at other alternatives. To this date, there's been no financial cost for the drainage project, so the township's on the hook, nor is the petitioner. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Any questions? No, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the Development and Drainage Coordinator dated August seven, twenty twenty-four, entitled Withdrawal Notification, Crampian Municipal Drain, DDC-two-zero-two-four-dash-thirty for information. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda, all in favor, carried. Okay, thanks, Eric. We'll move now to the Perth East Twinning Interest Group, and Ashley's going to give that.
Okay, thanks, Mary Riggots. So before you is draft terms of reference for the Perth East Twinning Interest Group. Just on page two of the draft terms under community members, it says four there, it should say five. Page one has five, it was just missed to change that to four individuals for community members, should be changed to five. The terms are wrote not specifically for the current twinning opportunity that we have, or the current twinning partnership that we have, but opportunities for more twinning opportunities with cities or countries. So that's why it's more not specific, if you're wondering why Narasheim isn't referenced at all in these terms. I couldn't answer any questions. If there's any questions, everything else is outlined in the report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? Hugh?
Just a question on one sixty-seven, when we talked about remuneration. Like, we have different things, like we have library board, people, fire board, and all that kind of stuff. Like, do we have a policy that we have a committee? How we pay the, the members of council that are on? Because some of these, you get paid, so like, do we have any kind of policy that goes by there?
Our remuneration policy is usually what we go off of for that expense. So mileage is what council members claim, or when they're at the meetings, and they, that would be included in their remuneration call off. Maybe, you know, more brief. Nothing more to add.
They'll just get mileage, correct? Not?
Mileage in addition, and then it would be in their, in the regular remuneration pay. Like your monthly remuneration pay. It would be included in that.
Okay, no, it's just, wasn't told to clarify on that, it's just that there's so many different things, and everything seems to be different. Who would be changing policy that we had, when we create committees and stuff like that?
Okay, other questions? If not, we do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received the report prepared by the manager of Legislative Services slash Municipal Clerk and Deputy Clerk dated August seven, twenty twenty-four, entitled Perth East Twinning Interest Group, PETIG Committee Requirement, CLE-two-zero-two-four-dash-fifteen for information. And further, that council adopt the terms of reference as part of the information, oh, excuse me, part of the formation of the Perth East Twinning Interest Committee, PETIC. Need a mover and a secondary, moved by Amanda, second by Jerry. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, you want a question? Okay.
So are we going to appoint the members after the initial meeting, or how does that work next there, clerk?
Yes. So the next steps, if council approves, the terms of reference would be for advertisements for the five community members. And then once that, once the applications are received, that would be brought forward to council and appointed similar to the other committees that we have. And then at that same meeting, I would anticipate that the two council reps would be appointed as well.
So the ones that are already there have to reapply. Is that, okay, just for clarification? Okay, just for clarification. Okay, anyone else with questions? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we are going to take a short little break. Okay, we're now moving to finance and first of all, congratulations Paula, great audit. I knew you it would come through with blind colors. I'll turn it over to you for your report on the year to date.
Thank you, Mayor Raggots. So before council tonight is the January to July 30th year to date. Report and as usual, managers, myself and the C A O have gone through and made any comments on areas to note. And there, I haven't noticed any trends to discuss with council tonight. Most departments are on target and at approximately 58% spent expended. And it should range, they should be ranging from 55 to 58% at this point in time. And yeah, if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the manager of financial services slash treasurer. Dated August 7, 2024 entitled January dash July 30, 2024 year to date F I N two zero two four dash 15 for information. Moved by Amanda, second by Andrew, all in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks Paula. We're going to move to public works and the first one is the encroachment agreement with Milverton Public School Staff Parking Lot. Jake, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Raggots. The first two reports tonight. Is relating to Milverton Public School. We are looking to enter into a encroachment agreement with them. As I would imagine, all councillors know by now, there are some concerns in and around the area with congestion around pickup and drop off time. The school board reached out to us to see what they could come up with and we were back and forth a few times. This even predates me, but one of the things that they're doing on their own property for starters is redoing their existing parking lot. And they're going to get, I believe it is 10 more spaces out of that. Which will alleviate some of that on-street parking that causes or increases the congestion, I guess, in front of the school. But a another piece they're hoping for is to actually construct a parking lot on Cobalt Street. Which most of the parking spaces themselves are going to be on the township road allowance. Which is why the encroachment agreement is necessary. This would give them, I believe it is 12 additional parking spots. Which would be dedicated for school staff. We've found in our discussions with the school board and the school themselves, a lot of the teachers are actually parking in front of the school. Throughout the entirety of the day and that's causing further issues. This would be at the sole cost of the school board. And additionally, they're looking to extend the sidewalk. From the corner of Cobalt and Mill down to the daycare facility when that is constructed. And lastly, something we've kind of discussed, I'll just touch on tonight. Is we've looked at updating our parking bylaw to restrict the spaces in front of the. Right in front of the school to a drop off, a limited drop off time. But we'll see once the parking lot, if it goes ahead here tonight. Changes the dynamic down there and we can look to implement that later. So we'll we'll wait on that one and we can come back to council at a later date. If there are any questions on the report, I'll try and answer.
Okay, thanks Jake. Any questions on the report? Hugh?
Yeah, like that Cobalt Street that we're talking about, we've been having along yet. Is there, like if we do this, is there any possibility then in the future, we're going to have to dig this stuff up or do something else? Like I, if something goes in, that's fine, I just don't know in two years I have to dig it up again and stuff like that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question. There are provisions in the agreement itself that speak to redevelopment of the road. That kind of protect us from that side of things. It's not to say there might not be adjustments have to be made to the parking lot in the future. But I think it should be able to remain. But we can try and implement that when we do reconstruct, if we reconstruct at some point in the near future, so.
Okay, anything else? Now, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the manager of public works dated August 7, 2024 entitled. Encroachment Agreement, Milverton Public School Staff Parking Lot, P U B dash two zero two four dash 17 for information. And further that council gives three readings to by law 46 dash 2024. Authorizing the mayor and a municipal clerk to sign the encroachment agreement with Avon Maitland District School Board. Moved by. Bob, second by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. Okay, and the next one is our Water Works Financial Plan, Jake?
Thanks again, Mayor Raggots. Like to start by giving Paula some more positive feedback and thanking her for her involvement with this one. This financial plan is a six-year term. It's a requirement from the regulation where we forfeit three. Now, we have our municipal drinking water licenses set to expire in 2025. The application deadline for the renewal is this month. And as part of the requirements for the renewal, we have to prepare a financial plan. There is is nothing that says in the regulation that you have to follow exactly the plan. So it is a roadmap to some degree. Not to say there wasn't a lot of thought put into this, but it can be, it can be changed along the way. There are quite a number of assumptions that were a part of this financial plan. Some of the major ones include obviously the Shakespeare Treatment Plant that is in the works. We're not aware of the operating costs or the the end costs of what that's going to be. So it was not ideal timing for preparing this plan. And secondly, the implications of the the capital side. We're undergoing a review of our master wastewater water plan right now. And that is going to provide us a lot of guidance for our capital stuff. So again, there were some assumptions made. Not to say this, this doesn't hold a lot of weight. Our previous plan. It was not followed to a T, but it we did get fairly close to where we projected. And again. We're still going to be reviewing our rates annually. This doesn't change the process at this point. If there are any questions on this, I will do my best to answer.
Okay, questions on the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the. prepared by the manager of public works dated August 7, 2024 entitled Water Works Financial Plan, P U B dash twenty twenty-four dash eighteen for information. And further, that council approve the zero five three dash one zero one A Water Financial Plan, two thousand, two zero two five to two zero three zero as presented. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks Jake. We are moving to building bylaw. We have quarterly development report. Wes, the floor is yours.
Thank you Mayor Eggers. Before council is the quarterly development report indicating development in Perth East and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Okay, any questions on the report? If not, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East receives a report prepared by the manager of building and planning, chief building official dated August 7, 2024 entitled Quarterly Development Report, April to June, 2024, C B O dash two zero two four dash twelve for information. Moved by Andrew, seconded by Amanda, all in favor? Carried. Thanks Wes. Now we're going, no reports for Parks, Recreation and Community Services. We did fire already, so now we're going to go to correspondence and we have one item of correspondence and that's from Brian Petrie. He's the Chair of the Upper Thames River Conservation Board. He's asking us to support changes in the fees. Any questions Hugh? You wanna comment? Being you sit, are representative on the board?
No, the only comment I'd make that we usually go to development pays for development. So people that are getting these permits should actually be paying the cost of the permits and if we don't have people paying for the full cost of the permit, that's just going to come back and all taxpayers are gonna be paying for that. So I would support.
Okay, anyone else? We do have a couple other things we're wondering, maybe Mike can explain them. I, I remember one. I can't remember the other one. I'll let you do it.
Thanks Mayor Eggsy. Yeah, the mayor and I spoke about this and I think the deputy mayor spoke well too in terms of, yeah, we're not looking, I think us as a council and as a township do support the idea that the permit takers should be covering the costs associated with the reviews. I think the one thing with us, we're in a bit of a unique circumstance in that we have three conservation authorities that we're dealing with. So the one question that maybe we could ask and it's not necessary, but we could be asking is, yeah, what are the permit fees in comparison to the other conservation authorities? My understanding is that part of the reason the province has done this is that there is wide variation as it relates to permit costs across the province. So they're trying to get a, a better understanding of that. And I think in particular with Upper Thames, you know, we are a small portion of Upper Thames and of the number of permits, how many of those permits are Perth East permits? And are our fees aligned with the other permits that we're getting through Grand River Conservation or Air Mainland Valley Conservation? Or is maybe one question, but I don't, I, I, again, I don't dispute the comments that the deputy mayor made. I think, yeah, we're not looking to avoid permit fees to it end up being on the levy. That's not the intent, but maybe a better understanding of where the current fees lie in comparison to the other conservation authorities that would deal with it in Perth East. Might be useful for council.
Okay, anyone else? Hugh?
Oh yeah, no, I would support that. I think that would be very useful for us to understand what each conservation authority, because I've heard for some fees, the grand more than Upper Thames and I've heard other fees at Upper Thames doing that are greater than the grand. So maybe a bit more information on that. I would be certainly supportive of that.
Okay, so we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received the correspondence from Brian Petrie, Chair, Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Board of Directors, request for support in response to the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry of Ontario direct, direction on fees, changes associated with planning, development and permitting for information and that council asks the Upper Thames to provide more information on the, how do you wanna word this on the?
Yeah, I think maybe comparison of fees.
Comparison of fees with the other local conservation areas for for their permits, for their building permits? So Hugh, you wanna move that? Do we have a seconder for that? Amanda? Let's just read that second part out again, unless you want to. And that council directs staff to request that U T C R A provide a comparison of fees amongst other conservation authorities. Amanda?
Should it not say local instead of, cause other could apply to other, like across the province?
Amongst local conservation authorities?
Right, the ones that are within our watershed.
Okay, do you want them listed or do you want them to do others besides?
Like, all I'm saying is they shouldn't be comparing themselves to somewhere that's really far away because there's like a lot of conservation authorities across the province.
So should we list them? You want them especially the grand and the Maitland plus others? So that they do the local ones?
I'm fine with either, you know, within the, like the local watershed or we can just list the ones that we deal with at Perth East. I'm, I'm fine with either or. I just think we should probably specify.
Be more specific? What is the move of thinking? So directs staff to request you to provide a, a comparison of fees amongst local conservation authorities, including the grand, Maitland and others? Grand, Maitland and? Just the three?
Yeah, just the three, yeah. Those are the ones that are within our watershed.
Okay, so just the three of them then? Okay, that was moved by Hugh and seconded by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we're moving to council and committee reports. So there's no mayor's meeting log because she forgot to send it in, so it'll come next month. How about verbal reports? Is there any verbal reports from anyone in any committees? I think most of the committees are shut down for the, the summer. So, okay, so there's nothing there. So then we'll move to bylaws. We have first and second reading for four different bylaws. We have bylaw forty-five, twenty twenty-four and it's a bylaw to exempt part lot control, lot thirty, plan forty-four M Milverton. That was under the William J. Gees construction. That was eight point one point two tonight. And then the second one, bylaw forty-six, twenty twenty-four, bylaw to enter into an encroachment agreement with Avon Maitland District School Board for the proposed parking area encroaching on Cobalt Street North and that was item eight point five point one. The third one, bylaw two oh nine, twenty twenty-four, to amend bylaw thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine. That's West Part, lot thirty-four concession for Southeast Hope Ward, twenty-seven fifty, line twenty-nine. That was a Heinbach application tonight, seven point one point one. And the fourth one, bylaw twenty-ten, twenty twenty-four, bylaw to amend bylaw thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine, lot thirty-one concession three, Ellis Ward, forty-two sixteen, road one forty-five. And that was a Phelps application and that was seven point one point two. So we need a mover and a seconder for those first and second readings. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. And then we have third and final readings. We have seven of them. The first one is bylaw forty-five, twenty twenty-four, bylaw to exempt part lot control thirty, plan forty-four M dash eighty, Milverton. And that was the William J. Gees construction application tonight. The second one, forty-six, twenty twenty-four, bylaw to enter into an encroachment agreement with Avon Maitland District School Board for the proposed parking area encroaching on Cobalt Street. And that was tonight again, eight point five point one. The third one is bylaw one oh one, a bylaw to provide for drainage works known as Branch A of the North Black Creek Municipal Drain, twenty twenty-four. The fourth one is bylaw one oh four, twenty twenty-four, a bylaw to provide for drainage works known as a Rossstock Municipal Drain, twenty twenty-four. The fifth one, bylaw one oh five, twenty twenty-four, a bylaw to provide for drainage works known as a Wilker Municipal Drain, twenty twenty-four. The sixth one, bylaw two oh nine, twenty twenty-four, a bylaw to amend thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine. West Part, lot thirty-four concession for Southeast Hope Ward, twenty-seven fifty, line twenty-nine. That was a Heinbach application tonight. And the seventh one is bylaw two-ten, twenty twenty-four, a bylaw to amend bylaw thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine, lot thirty-one concession three, Ellis Ward, forty-two sixteen, road one forty-five. And that was a Phelps application tonight. So a mover and a seconder, third and final readings. Jerry and Amanda, all in favor? Carried. Do we have any notice of motions? Then we have other business. We have three items. The first one is the July sixteen, twenty twenty-four budget visiting meeting follow-up. We have several, I'll get to it. Several different motions. Do you wanna handle them separately? How do you wanna do this? So each one separate? Okay. So the first one is the council of the township of Perth East direct staff to target between three and five percent as a maximum budget increase for twenty twenty-five. We have a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Andrew. You have a question? Question? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, what was the consensus on that? I, I didn't pull it up to look and see. Was it three to five or? No, no, just curious. I, I kind of thought three was where I was at, but I don't know. Was there a consensus?
I thought the consensus was three to five. I think we went over them kind of quick that night and I don't remember anybody disputing it. I think it's pretty hard to hold to one figure. I know you want it as low as you can, but three percent's pretty low.
Well, you shoot for something. Usually it's a little more, right? If we shoot for five, it's gonna be five and change. So that's why.
Well, I think staff do a pretty good job of, of doing what we ask, so. Anyway, let's see if we have a mover and a seconder for this. That council township, are you moving it Andrew or not? Yes, okay. Seconder Jerry. So that the direct staff to target between three and five percent. Okay, all of us in favor? Carried. That next one is that council of the township of Perth East direct staff to continue to pursue upper level of government financial support to ensure funding is available to address infrastructure needs. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. The next one is that council of the township of Perth East direct staff to ensure reserve contributions in twenty twenty-five continue at a level that offset inflationary pressures and address future asset management needs. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. The next one is that council of the township of Perth East direct staff to investigate the following topics as part of the preliminary twenty twenty-five budget presentation. Number one, sidewalk budget, five-year forecast of sidewalk rehabilitation projects with consideration of timing of full street rehabilitation projects. Number two, an increase in the winter control reserve to help address impacts of more frequent severe storms. Three, budget information contain real dollar impact on typical property classes. And the fourth one, cost analysis associated with the continuation of a yard waste drop-off program with increased marketing slash advertising efforts. Moved by Jerry, seconded by Amanda, all in favor? Carried. That council of the township of Perth East direct staff to initiate conversations with Blue Water Recycling around cost-effective diversion strategies for the Perth East landfill site to extend the useful life of the landfill to serve current and future residents of Perth East. Moved by Hugh, seconded by Bob, all in favor? Carried. Okay, and the next one, that council of the township of Perth East direct staff to review and update policy F L one point two three point zero one, recreation and cultural funding to ensure that the policy addresses the following items. One, one offered request for township financial support for assets not owned or maintained by the township. Number two, when the township is eligible to issue charitable donation receipts to individual or corporate donors. And number three, when the township will take ownership of grant funding applications on behalf of community groups. And further, that council direct staff to update capital budget forecasts to reflect all recreation and culture assets, including but not limited to fencing, bleachers, lighting facilities currently maintained by others. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Jerry, all in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to do the next one, which is the draft resolution, sustainable funding for small rural municipal, municipal infrastructure. Wow, am I gonna read all that? I hope not. Moved by Jerry, seconded by Andrew. You're gonna make me read it? No? Okay, so it's, the gist of it is that it talks about, so I said. Sustainable funding for small rural municipal infrastructure. So if anyone wants to read it, it is in our council package. It is a page and a half long and I don't think at this point I'm gonna read it. Do you have questions?
But this came about from our budget vision, right? This is excellent, excellent way it's worded. I really like it.
Okay, all in favor? Carried. I'm sure, didn't think I'd get away with that one. Okay, and the next one, we have a resident request of no parking signs at the railway tracks and this was submitted by Andrew. Andrew, do you wanna make any comments on this?
Uh, thank you Mary. It's like yourself, I, I didn't hit send, so this was meant to go in the budget supply visioning session like some of the requests. So I thought it was important enough. Residents been sending me pictures and phone calls and I've gone out a few times to see it. As you notice from the pictures, at one eleven, just before the elevation change in the railway tracks, there's a lot of vehicles parking on the sides of the road. Now, the concerns that were brought forward to me were about degrading of the side of the road. I'm not sure whether public works noticed that. Couple people, different people talked about if there's a vehicle parked there and Canada Post comes along to deliver mail, they won't, you know, it's, it's, it's not safe, right? So that was, that's something I didn't expect. And then the other one, someone's right in the middle of the road on the other side of the railway crossing on a very busy road. So I thought due to safety, I, I don't think I've ever submitted anything on behalf of residents before, but in this case, I thought it was a, a significant safety issue. So that's why it's in front of us. So for council's consideration, the suggestion is, is nothing dramatic, just no parking signs for the, for the length. So. I'm not sure if we want a staff report. I don't know if that's, if that, I think probably public works knows the situation possibly and whether we can just go ahead with it, with it now or?
Well, we are going to, just before I let Jake talk, we are going to meet with Ben Mett and this is one of the things that we can talk to them about and see where they're at and why, you know, people are parking and if it can be prevented.
I, I'm just, I, I, I don't think they have any control over what people do once they leave your yard, I guess is where I'm at. It would be my, would be my, the way I see that. You're not gonna go run up and down the road and say move your truck, right? So I, I would say at this point, it's, it's a severe, I actually am a bit sensitive to this because I witnessed a fatality at that railway crossing once, me and my son. So we don't wanna see, it's a very busy road. Don't wanna see any collisions or bicyclists involved driving bicycles up and down. They're really, you know, the next concession down, there's no houses on it. It's a, it's a bicycle route. It's a issue waiting to happen. So I appreciate the Ben Mett stuff, the proprietor, but this is kind of our, our road. So I would say that I would like to move forward with this. If, if I can make a motion at this point?
No, I won't let Jake speak and anybody else that wishes to speak to it first. Jake?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Just one thing I wanted to touch on and it was actually meant to, to come to council initially tonight, was we've been approached by the M T O about the intersection of one eleven and thirty-four. They'd like to see a reduced speed from the tracks to thirty-four and actually on the other side of one eleven as well, down to a, a down to a fifty. They're working on a memo for us around that request, but that is due in part to the intersection improvements they're making there. So there'll be more to come on that, but I would anticipate a request anyways for a speed reduction and I can certainly see good merit for that. Now, just one other comment around the edge of the road. We actually just recently, our public work staff did some ditching along in front of Ben Mett's there. And I think we've addressed those concerns, unless those are recent comments you're hearing, but it's just within the last couple of weeks that was done. And lastly, yeah, the, I guess the way forward with this, if you want to move that would just be, we'd have to amend the, the bylaw as it is now. So I think that's all I've got for comments.
Okay, anyone else? Bob?
Just that you brought up the, I guess, MTO study. It was my understanding was a year long process to decide whether they're going to put a light in or roundabout. I'm just hopeful that we're provided some opportunity to comment on that process. And with all our adequate fire data, we can show them how many accidents we respond to, our calls at that intersection that hopefully they can make a decent improvement that's been well overdue. Just because this is a public document and there's not a whole lot of information for those that are watching, it really should say the location on Shakespeare should probably identify road one eleven or McConaughey Road. If you look under thirteen point three, it does say Shakespeare. So it would be better if it was labeled a little better what, you know, road it was and maybe section of road. I know where it is, but not everybody else is going to read that and understand this photograph and tagline.
Okay, anyone else? I have one question. Do we have criteria where we put no parking signs? Do we have a policy or anything on that?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm not sure if there's a strict policy or a corporate policy around placement. I know we can only, or I can only put temporary ones without the amendment of that, that bylaw, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't place them here. But I can certainly get back to, to council if there is a policy or not around the placement of signage. Likely it would reference the Ontario Traffic Manual. I doubt there's an in-house policy that would supersede that, but I can, like I say, get back to council with that.
Okay, Amanda?
I just have a question regarding, should we proceed with this? What kind of enforcement would happen and resources we would have to put towards it? And would they like get tickets or like what would that look like? So I just have some questions. I think there's been some good things, like good discussion around it. Personally, I would feel comfortable with like a staff report outlining all of these things because I think there's some moving parts. But that's just sort of where I'm at because I don't expect, you guys didn't know the answer to my question as an example about enforcement, like, but just it would be helpful to know because it would be, if we were to change the bylaw, then that would also impact potentially other locations in the township as well and also could be a vegetarian impact.
Okay, Andrew, do you still want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I think we've heard some staffs that, that it's possible. So I just want to, and I appreciate the comment from councillor for North Perth about that, yeah, I didn't put in the, the location. It does say, what's that?
We said North Perth.
North, north, northeast hope, sorry. I'm just trying to scroll it off it. So the, the picture of the white truck, for example, that's parked. The person is not in it and they're fifty feet from the elevated railway tracks. I don't know if anybody goes there. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay for a staff report. I think that staff can probably
Is that what you're moving?
I'm discussing the pictures if I could, Mary Egits. Yeah, so there's many things and this has been probably since the ownership has changed hands. So this is separate from the Ben Mett issue. If this was anywhere else for any other traffic, this would also be a problem. I know the one side of the road is Stratford and it's not, I don't know how close it goes. I think it's after the railway tracks, right? So that's, that'll be Stratford City now. But I think it's a, I think it's a clear and present danger immediately that there's a problem here. And I would hate to see a bicyclist or a pedestrian or somebody not get their mail or a federal employee get hurt. So that's what's been relayed to me by the people there. So I'm prepared to move. We proceed with the implementation of no parking signs along the stretch of the road.
Okay, so Andrew's moving that we put no parking signs on. Do we have a seconder? Hugh? Comments or questions? Bob?
I think our normal process would be a staff report to bring back all the pertinent information that we need and give them direction. They can identify where the signs are and whatever other implications there are. It'll happen, it's just not going to happen right away. That would be normal.
Okay, Amanda?
Yes, I feel similar. I appreciate what's been brought forward. I think it's a good discussion. Like I said, I had a question tonight. Staff wasn't able to answer that because it's something that requires more of a fulsome report. And so I, I don't feel comfortable, you know, proceeding with the motion the way it, it currently reads, but absolutely would, would welcome a staff report. And is that something I would be more comfortable agreeing to?
Okay, so the motion on the floor is that council direct staff to install the parking signs along road one eleven from the railway track north to line thirty four, moved by Andrew, second by Hugh. All those in favor? Opposed? Defeated. Okay. Okay, recorded vote?
Okay. Councillor Broadhagen?
Nay.
Councillor McMillan?
Nay.
Councillor Smith?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor McDermid? Councillor McAlpine?
Yay.
And Mayor Egits?
Nay.
Okay, would someone else like to move into a different motion? Councillor Bob?
I'll make a motion to refer to staff for a report if possible at our next meeting to identify the location and any costs associated with no parking signs on road one eleven between the railroad tracks and highway seven and eight.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Amanda? Comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion that council refer to staff for a follow up report regarding no parking signs. Oh, sorry, no parking installation signs along road one eleven from the railway tracks north to line thirty four. Okay? Bob and Amanda, good? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, do we have any announcements? We do not have a closed session, so we are at the confirmatory bylaw. That bylaw forty seven, twenty twenty four, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the township of Perth East at its regular meeting held in August seventh, twenty twenty four, be read a first, second and third time. Moved by Amanda, second by Bob, all in favor, carried. And the last motion of the night, that the meeting of council be adjourned at nine thirty eight PM. Moved by Amanda, second by Jerry, all in favor, carried. Thanks everyone. Great night.